Welcome, everyone. Let's all please rise with allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Hammond.
Here.
Vice President Daley.
Here.
Trustee Clements.
Here.
Trustee Hedlund.
Here.
Trustee Parr.
Here.
Okay, just want to remind everybody that the next Board of Ed meeting will be next, Tuesday, March 5th, 7:00 PM, here in the Band Room. We had a little reprieve, and now we have back-to-back. So just want to remind everybody of that. Dr. Bernate?
So to start, I'd first like to just send my congratulations to the Haldene Girls Basketball Team. As many of you know, the team won the sectional championship last weekend down at Pace University, and they're getting ready now for the regional tournament, which will take place next week. And Mr. Salem, do we know our opponent yet?
No.
No, but mostly, no.
No, we don't know yet. Further comment during your report, I'm sure. So we look forward to that, and congratulations to Coach Stevens and the team. As we discussed earlier this school year when we were setting the workshop agendas, we're going to take a bit of a different approach periodically throughout the year, and each building principal, over the next three successive workshops, will be presenting more of a detailed report about the program in their school. So something new, a new structure and format. So Mr. Wallach has prepared an overview, and at this time, I'd like to welcome him. Ms. Diniya will pull up the presentation, and we will turn this over to you, Mr. Wallach. And I'm going to move, just give us a moment, David, and we'll go from there.
If you don't move my back to the camera, I'm just going to turn this way a little bit, so I know I'm addressing the board, but I also don't totally want to have my back to the public. And as my tech person, hopefully everything goes smoothly. We rehearsed it, so it should be. Obviously, I'm going to say a lot of things about our school tonight, probably as board members, two of you are current parents, many of you are past parents in the elementary school, nothing that's going to be surprising, but certainly information that's worth sharing. You know, our school, we have 18 homeroom classrooms right now. We have an average class size of 17.8, which is a really nice thing. You know, direct contact time between students and teachers is certainly something that has to impact how our students do. We're very lucky to have this small class size. Right now, our 4th grade classes are above 20, but every other grade at the moment is below 20, which again, is not something that happens in every school. It may be unique to us because of our size. We can't necessarily break sections, but it's a great thing to have as we currently have it. My notes are in a very large print, so I could read them even without glasses, but hopefully we'll still work with glasses. So our students in K-5, every day participate in ELA. We use a readers workshop and writers workshop model. We use a TCRWP, Teachers College Reading and Writing Project Framework. We'll talk more about that a little bit later, because we're pushing a lot this year with our TC framework for writing, and that's going to be pushed next year for reading as well. We also have daily instruction using Eureka Math. Eureka Math is tied to state standards, Common Core standards, Next Gen standards, so it's a program that is very appropriate for elementary students in New York State. For science, our instruction comes from Science 21, which is a PNW BOSIS program that was started here in this area, but is actually now used by many, many districts throughout New York State, and even a handful of districts outside of New York State. It's a great hands-on program. It provides the students with the skills that they need going forward. For social studies, we use, I say, an archive version of a social studies ELA program for Putnam Northern Westchester BOSIS. The past handful of years, our district hasn't paid for it, so we were not able to print out the updates, but our teachers are all using materials that they did print out in the past, and they're still current, and our teachers are able to update materials on their own from their own sources. So it's not that our students are missing anything at present, but I just want to assure that that's something that we do every day in our classrooms as well. Obviously, our students go to our special area classes once a week. Our students visit Ms. Branco for art. Once a week, our students have music, most of them with Mr. McGrordy, some of them with Ms. Ferbota. Our students, twice a week, go to physical education, most of them with Coach D, some of them with Coach C. And we also have library garden once a week. We've changed how we did that this year compared to how it was last year. So every month, there is one session outside in the garden. The other three sessions are inside in the library. We really felt we needed to improve on our library skills instruction, some of the research skills that the students need going forward. The other thing that we have changed as part of our library instruction this year is that our 5th graders are taught by Terry Ekis, our secondary librarian, and that really gives them a boost going to the middle school, working with Dr. Silke next year in her building. The kindergarten through 4th grade students have their program with Ms. Llewellyn, who's our teaching assistant, who runs that library garden program under the direction of Terry Ekis. Obviously, we have a lot of other special areas as well for students that need them. We have OT, we have PT, we have speech, we have language, we have counseling support, we have ICT classes, we have pull-out special area classes. Whatever our students need, we're able to offer a wide variety of services to meet their needs, which is again, given the size of our district, we're able to do an incredible job of putting all those things together. I want to look at some test scores. Test scores are certainly not the end-all and be-all, but they are something to compare our school with other schools, compare how we did this year with last year. This is the state testing results, so it only is looking at our grade 3, 4, and 5 students, because students don't begin taking these tests until they hit 3rd grade. The state has told us we cannot compare 2018 results with 2017 results due to the change in the test. I compared them anyways, and I think you'll find educators in other places are doing the same thing. So this is looking at all of our ELA students. You'll notice the number of students that were proficient increased from 61% to 63%. It's a slight increase, but an increase is an increase. You're never going to see, I don't think, a large increase from one year to the next. Also, what's nice is the number of students at the lowest level, at Level 1, decreased. So we're certainly moving in the right direction. The state divides up the results into many areas: gender, ethnicity, limited income, English-language learners. For most of these subcategories, because of the size of our district, we don't get significantly results that we can use, statistically significant results. The only comparison that I made, I wanted to compare how our general education students are doing with our students with disabilities. You'll notice that both categories increased. And again, when looking at our students with disabilities, again, this was ELA 2017, 2018, again, it's nice to notice that that lowest level of students, Level 1, that number has decreased both in our, well, actually stayed the same in our general education, but overall in our special education program, the number of students went down, more students scoring at higher levels, which is nice. Also was able to look at the same thing for math. Again, we're looking at grades 3, 4, and 5, comparing 2017 with 2018. Again, a continual progress throughout, and really, that's all we can ask for. We want to move as quickly as we can to get the most number of kids at the highest scoring levels, but as long as we continually go in the right direction, I believe we'll get to where we want to get to. I also printed, whoops, sorry, have that right there, the same thing, that's math results, again, comparing our general education population and our students with disabilities population. And again, you'll notice on both slides that there were improvements made from 2017 to 2018. We take the state tests because we have to take the state tests. We take the NWA assessment because that's an assessment that our district has chosen to give to our students. We give that assessment to our students three times a year: beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. We also, at the elementary level, give that to every student grade K-5, so we have data right there. These are our most recent results. These were from January, so just literally from last month. Looking at each grade level, those are percentages, the percentages of students average or above, the percentage of students that are high average or above. I don't have this data, say, to compare to another school district or anything like that. Really, all we can look at is how we are doing over time. I didn't print out beginning of the year compared to middle of the year, but that data is available to me, as well as to my teachers and everybody else. So it certainly shows that we're doing very well with our assessment data, and again, most important are my teachers' own assessments that they do daily with their students. When they're teaching math, when they're teaching ELA, science, and social studies, they're continually, sometimes informally, sometimes formally, assessing their students to give them the data that they need so that they can share the results of how their students are doing with their parents, with the other professionals in the building as time goes on. Mrs. Diniya, if you want to just get that video ready, the next thing I want to show you, we're going to be talking a little bit about our TC program, our Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, and we have a little over a two-minute video clip. This is going to show you a sample of a 1st-grade classroom and how a teacher, in this case, a professional developer from Teachers College, working at another school, works with a small group of 1st graders. So we're just going to let this run for, I think, about 2 minutes and 20 seconds or so, so we'll just watch that.
Hi. So I know that we have been working on elaborating or writing more in our stories, and we know that some ways we can elaborate is by writing down our thoughts, writing down what we're feeling, and writing down what we're saying or other people are saying. And I noticed, and I was looking at your writing, that you guys all have some of those things in your writing, but I was thinking that I could show you about a really special spot where you can put in thinking and talking and feeling into your writing, and that's at the end of the story. So instead of writing "the end" at the end of our writing book, we can end with someone saying something, someone thinking something, or someone feeling something. And you guys have that choice as a writer of how you want to end your story to make it really powerful. So writers do that all the time. I was looking through my books, and I found some of our books from the classroom where the author ended with thinking or talking or feeling too. I'm going to show you some of them now. In this book, Sammy's Slippery Day, it's a book about our friend Sammy. He gets in a lot of trouble and makes a huge mess. Well, at the end of the story, after Dad finishes cleaning Sammy up and has an action there, the author finishes the story by saying, "I think you've caused enough trouble for today, Sammy." And the mom ends with talking in this book. Then I was reading this book, When Tiny Was Tiny, and in this book, the author ends with a thought. It's about a boy in his bog, Tiny, who's not Tiny at all, and he says, "When Tiny was tiny, he was my best friend. He still is." Did you see how the author in this book ended with what people were saying? And the author in this book ended with what someone was thinking. Now, looking at your writing, you ended your stories with action. That's one way to end it, but another way is to add thinking and feeling and talking. So I'm going to pass out your stories, and I want you to think about how you can add to the ending of your story. So let's take a look. Why don't you read your stories so you can figure out and get to the end of...
Thank you. Now, that's a very different way of teaching than probably, and learning that probably most of us remember as adults going to school. Andrew, you're the youngest person in this room, I believe. It may be something similar to, you might have experienced in 1st grade.
Yeah, we did some things like that, I can remember.
Sure. But it's not how those of us adults, for the most part, remember schooling. We are going to be using and talking about a Teachers College Reading and Writing Project Framework. We use the word "framework" because it's not a complete prescribed program of how to teach with an exact script for a teacher. Rather, it's a framework to give the teacher the freedom to be able to use the materials given to them in a way that's best for their students, to be able to differentiate for different students' ability levels, to be able to work with what the needs of those individual students are. Now, we have previously piloted this program in grades kindergarten and 1. Actually, even before I was here, it started two years ago. We had a gift to some of the units from a community member who had students in the school. The kindergarten and 1st grade teachers liked it, were very, very happy with it, were successful with it. This year, we have 10 days of professional development provided to us by Teachers College. We have two different staff developers, one woman who is here five days to work with our kindergarten through 2nd grade teachers, another woman who is here five days to work with our grade 3 through 5 teachers. On each of these days, each grade-level team spends an hour and a half at a time with the staff developer. There's some group work in a conference room, but there's also some demonstration lessons that go on in the classrooms, which would be something similar to what we just saw in that video. Those are very beneficial for our teachers to see this program in action. As time goes on, there's a gradual release where our teachers are working in the demonstration site and getting the feedback from the staff developer, so we really grow the talents of our faculty. This year, we are using the writing units of study. We were able to purchase them so that every single classroom has them for this year. Next year, their budget request will be that we have the reading units of study for every classroom as well, as well as document cameras. We right now have enough document cameras for almost half our classrooms, but to be able to use this program fully, this framework fully, it's very helpful to have document cameras. I believe they're $300 to $400 each these days for the quality ones that are needed in a classroom, but they really do make the program come to life in many ways for the kids. So that's something that we will be, that I have asked for, for the building going forward. The way the workshop model is used, it starts with a mini lesson, usually all the teachers in front of, I'm sorry, all the students in front of the teacher. The teacher will have an easel, or a chart, or the smartboard next to him or her, going over a small mini lesson. The students are then sent back to their work areas for some independent work, but also their small group work. The small group work is usually with the teacher. Again, that would be something similar to what we saw in that video a few minutes ago. There's what's called a mid-workshop teaching point. Halfway through, it's planned in advance, the teacher will stop the class, "Hey, boys and girls, I just noticed," and it's meant to look very organic, but in reality, it's all planned, as good teaching is. And then at the end of the lesson, there's always a share, where the kids get to share their work. It's a time for celebration so that the students can see and hear what each other are doing and feel good about the work that they do. Why did we choose the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project as our framework? Well, this is a chart that they have provided to us, but it shows the efficacy of their program. The light green and dark green bars are all schools in New York State and New York City. The blue bars are schools that use the TC framework. The light blue bars are schools that use the writing and reading program. The dark blue bars are what they call their core schools. Those have used the writing and reading framework for three or more consecutive years. So they're, excuse me, they're able to show some success, some good success, on New York State assessments from schools that use their program. Obviously, that's something, the area that we want to be moving in the direction too. So there's a lot of reasons why we chose it, but that's just one reason, that is there is research to show that it's very successful, and we obviously want our students to do as well as they can. We have some other initiatives that are going on in the building this year. I just want to briefly mention them. Character education is really, really important to us as part of a social-emotional learning curriculum. We have monthly character themes, we have daily announcements, we've had a couple of brief assemblies, we've had bulletin boards. Really helping our students to be better citizens. We know they're smart academically, but that's part of life, but being a good citizen in our school, in our community, in our even larger community than that, is something that we believe is important, so that any way we can help our students move in that direction is something we're going to do. Also, the Science 21 curriculum is being updated year by year as the Next Gen Science Standards come into play. This year, it's 2nd grade that is upgraded. Last year was 1st grade. Our teachers are going to workshops at Putnam Northern Westchester BOSIS. They're learning about the new hands-on experiments that they'll be doing with their kids that match the newest standards, and learning about the new materials that are going to be coming their way in the kits that we have purchased through BOSIS that arrive in our school a few times a year. So those are some of the other initiatives. I think the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project Framework is definitely the biggest initiative that we have this year. Beautiful picture of the entrance of our school. I pretty much stand outside there every morning, and I certainly open myself up to any questions that you have.
I've got questions. I've always got questions.
Thank you, Josh.
Can, I know that there's been a lot of conversation, certainly when I was on the School Foundation, and then through other things I've heard, about how we use technology, especially in the elementary school. Can you talk a little bit about how that works and plans and that sort of stuff?
Sure. We use technology basically in everything that we do, more and more these days. If you walk into a 5th-grade classroom, they're making podcasts, and literally with microphones recording on laptops, they're making podcasts, which is something, again, 10 years ago, we would have never thought of students doing, maybe even 5 years ago wouldn't have thought of students doing. If I go in, there's a 4th-grade classroom I can go into where students are able to respond on their Chromebooks, and the teacher immediately gets the responses. They can be recorded on a smartboard, either anonymously or not anonymously, depending how the teacher sets it up. So that's another use of technology. When you look at our younger-grade classrooms, kindergarten and 1st grade are using iPads rather than Chromebooks, just because they're more interactive for the students, they can actually touch them, and it's a different experience. They are listening to stories, they are doing activities. So they're using technology all the time. Again, I think if you look back 10, 15 years ago, there might have been computers in a library setting in a school, but obviously now, we have computers everywhere, we have Chromebooks for almost every student in the upper grades, and they're used quite a bit. Our teachers are always learning new things that they can do with the technology that we have. We use technology for assessments. I mentioned the NWA assessments. It's all online. The students do it on their Chromebooks, or the younger students on their iPads. That's not a technology skill, but it's a use of technology. The fact that the district has invested in a much more robust Wi-Fi network than existed here even two years ago is really, really beneficial. I know when I started here in 2017, we kept hearing complaints, "Oh, the Wi-Fi doesn't work, the Wi-Fi doesn't work." Andrew, you've experienced this, obviously, as a student. The Wi-Fi doesn't work. Middle of last school year, there was a tremendous upgrade to the Wi-Fi network, and it helps us. I mean, there's, we haven't come across a limit to the number of devices that we connect and still get good service on them, so.
Can I make the call come?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, you say, like, almost in everything you do. I think I speak on the part of the board, I mean, people should disagree with me, that having technology integrated into anything isn't necessarily a priority of ours. I think, and you're actually the first person to do this, so you're actually getting maybe some...
That's okay.
...a more challenging set of questions, because this is something the board has asked for for years.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't gotten it in the past, and this just presents an opportunity for us to articulate that, and I'm not saying actually that your response indicated this, but I'm using this as an opportunity to articulate very clearly, that the board is not interested in quantity. The board is interested in, that there are, not that it's our decision to make curricular decisions, but that we have been encouraging previous superintendents and continue to have conversations, conversations, maybe not in this forum, but certainly, you know, anyway, I want to make sure...
In our goals and...
In our goals and other things. And the conversations we've had with each other, that we want to make sure that technology is being used really intentionally. And again, this is just an opportunity to say that. I was having, sorry, I had one of those things where I have like 15 different thoughts that are competing with each other at the same time. It's a bad habit of mine, and I apologize.
If I can briefly comment on that, again, 10, 15 years ago, elementary students would learn technology for the sake of learning technology.
Right.
And not really exactly what to do with it, just, but you can use the computer or whatever it is. Now, it is infused into what we do, so really, it's a math lesson that's better because we have a smartboard with manipulatives that we can move around on it. Or it's, a student is doing writing, and a student is able to produce more writing because he or she can type it on a Chromebook and be that much more successful than if he or she had to write it by hand. Minor little things, but overall, improving our education. So it's really embedded. It's not that we are, okay, now's the technology lesson. Obviously, that doesn't happen anymore.
But I think that's exactly, like, even just those brief little examples that you just gave are really helpful for us to hear, because I think so often, it's presented to us as, oh yeah, technology, we're using it all the time, they do it all the time, they do it all day, and we're like, yeah, but what are they doing? And it is a priority of the boards to make sure that it's not technology for technology's sake, but it's integrated into educational...
And it's an expensive endeavor, and, you know, I'm mindful of that and appreciative of the fact that the board and the district has provided that for our students and for our teachers, but it's definitely used properly for the benefit of our students and for their learning.
So speaking of technology, you mentioned the Docu-Cams for...
Sure.
Could you explain a little bit more?
So if you looked at the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project Framework in the past, they would have used big books, which are children's picture books, but blown up to lar, really large size. And, you know, I can remember being a kindergarten teacher 20 years ago and using big books. We don't do that anymore. We use document cameras and take a regular-sized book and project it either on a smartboard or with a projection screen. That's one use of it. But also, when our students are doing writing, for example, in any writing activity, one way we differentiate it is to give the students up to three different choices of writing paper. If you're looking at a younger student's classroom, you know, kindergarten might start off with one page that doesn't have any lines. It's just for pictures. That's a form of beginning writing. There might be another page that might just have a couple lines at the bottom. There might be another page that is half-lines and half-pictures for kindergarten. Everything is demonstrated to kids, and we want the kids to be able to see it. So to be able to take a sheet of paper and put it in a document camera, and it shows up large on screen, is very helpful. When a teacher is demonstrating how to write on a piece of paper, and again, the students, if there's 20 students in the classroom, they could all see it clearly. That's a tremendous benefit, you know? Students are sitting facing the teacher, you're the child who's in the last row, not as close. Can you see it? Can you not see it? If it's, you know, blown up larger than life, that definitely helps. So while there is a cost, and I'm thinking it's approximately $400 per camera, it's something that, once we have, lasts for a number of years, and it's very beneficial for the students.
And I had a second question, and I don't want to really focus on the state test scores. I had a question on the comparisons with the students with disabilities. Does that include 504 and IEP students, or what is that?
I believe students with disabilities is just our IEP students and not our 504 students. It includes all 13 categories of disabilities, so we obviously have a range of students with a range of challenges that they face, and if a student has an IEP, a student is reported to the state as a student with a disability.
Thank you.
Another question about the test scores. I saw that there's a little bit of a discrepancy in the NWA between ELA and math, and I don't know how you, you know, compare to other years, but it seemed like the students were doing much better in ELA than in math.
Yes.
Is that standard? Is that typical? Is that concerning?
My experience, both here and working in other schools, and talking to my professional colleagues who are elementary principals elsewhere in the region, is that that is common. Once we get into the, especially the higher-level math skills for elementary grades 4 and 5, with some of the new standards, it can be a challenge for some of the kids, where ELA is not quite as challenging. So yes, that is kind of normal. It doesn't mean it's acceptable. We obviously want our students to be just as successful in all curricular areas, and it's something to focus on, but I'm glad you noticed that, and it is correct that that's there. And again, if we were to talk to other schools, I'm pretty sure we'll find something very similar as well.
I had another question. The, a couple of years ago, when Mr. Harrington was the elementary principal, there was a lot of conversation about foreign language, and before he left us, it was towards the end of his time here, he was really starting to talk about trying to develop a FLESS program, and how to make it happen, and how to, and I haven't heard really much about it since then, so I guess my question to you is, I see that maybe we've talked about this, but is it still something that is being talked about? Is it a priority? Where does it fall?
So our ESIT team, which is a group of parents and teachers, the 2016, 2017 school year, which was Mr. Harrington's last year before I was here, spent a lot of time working on a plan for a FLESS world language Spanish program for our students. It was a great plan. It was a great plan, certainly something that I believe would benefit our students. I'm guessing it was a budgetary reason why it didn't follow through that year. I certainly discussed it with Dr. Bowers last year as something that, you know, I definitely would be interested in. And I know last year, Dr. Bauer said, "Well, budget times are very tight. It's, we, we can't add additional staff." I've certainly talked to Dr. Benanti about world languages. I don't want to share anything about that. I'll, I'll, I think I'll leave that for another time.
If I may, no, I'll speak briefly to it because it's a topic that is, I think, very relevant to our law, in our long-term planning. We're in a region where there are several school districts that offer a foreign language program beginning at the elementary level. And I think when we consider the long-term abilities that our students will have leaving high school, it's becoming increasingly more of an expectation for our students to be competitive post-secondary, to be fluent in a second language. So this is something that Mr. Wallach and I have begun to talk with certain groups of elementary teachers about. There may be some opportunities in that area in the next few years. The difficulty becomes budgeting and, and the model. So if we're going to make a commitment to this, we really want an immersive model, not foreign language as a separate special area that students go to once a week. Students are not going to learn a second language that way. It's just not enough. So we're considering, you know, what may be available, what could potentially fit a need for us, what the impact would be on staff. I'm actually going to talk a little bit about that in, in my presentation, other potential impacts on staff. But I do think it's an area, and I've been candid with certain, with our elementary teachers, that if not now, meaning in the next year, very soon, this, we're going to have a responsibility to really explore and perhaps prioritize this as an element of our elementary and potentially middle school programming before foreign language, the traditional foreign language instruction occurs, starting in our ele- or, or middle school. So we know the history or a little bit about the history and I think it's a topic that we're going to be coming back to in future years.
So we, we have discussed it, as you can see, so yeah.
We actually have a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:15 about it.
8:15 with some, 8:15 with some teachers tomorrow morning, a follow-up meeting to a meeting we had last week. So we're on top of that. Other questions anyone may have?
I, I have a comment. So there was a pattern I noticed in the data when you had the NWA scores up. And there's no way to know how to interpret this particular pattern, but I thought it was interesting to see that if you look, starting at kindergarten through fifth grade and you compare the national average, or the sort of, the, the sort of national percentage of students who are scoring high average or, or average, the percentage of Haldane students increases pretty significantly as the years go by, which leads, you know, suggests the possibility, the probability, I would say, but you know, we can't know for certain, that, that there's something happening in our elementary school that's, that's really a school level effect. That is, you know, our kids are coming in, yeah, not surprisingly, it's a relatively affluent community. We're a little, you know, are, the, the percentage of students who are above average is a little bit higher than you see on a national basis. That's not surprising. But the fact that that number relatively consistently continues to get larger than the national average really does suggest that there is something happening that's, you know, at the school that's really benefiting our kids and, and really speaks to high-quality education.
I agree. I mean, we, we have an excellent faculty that works very hard every day, but I looked at those numbers too and saw that the fourth and fifth grade percentages are much higher than say the kindergarten or first grade percentages. To me, that's proof that the program that we run for our students is successful, that we are giving those, them those skills that they need to be successful. And as they spend more and more years in our program, the more successful they will be. I mean, that's, that's how I would interpret it. I don't have research data to back that up, but just looking at the numbers and trying to make an interpretation from that.
Yeah, I, I thought that, I, it really, really stood out to, to me that, which was nice.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallach. I just want to, I can thank David. David, it's never easy to be the first person to go.
We'll ask different questions for the rest.
Apparently not the technology questions.
Appreciate that. I want to also appreciate the board. He asked great questions and that's the purpose of this. There can be some, an unfamiliarity at times with what's going on in the work in the school. I should have explained the, some of the parameters we asked David and the principals to work within before he presented, but I'll do it now. We are asking our, our principals as they report to keep these reports between 10 and 15 minutes just because we have an agenda. We don't want it to, you know, purvey too much of that, but we also want to leave plenty of time for questions and answers like we did tonight. So David, thank you for honoring that and thank you for asking such good questions.
Can I make one more comment?
Go ahead, yeah, please.
So one of the things that came up, I think it's some board meetings in the past, has been a concern with writing in particular. And so I think it's really great to see that the Teachers College program is being implemented. It is a, a program, I think, that's, that's been proven to be really quite successful. And so it, it's, it's great to see that that, you know, concern has really been addressed in some pretty targeted plans.
Yeah. And David showed a really interesting slide. It's data from Teachers College on student performance on the ELA assessment in their schools that are core schools, schools that have utilized their framework for a period of time. Non-score, non-core schools, but schools that are using their framework for less than three years compared to state averages. And an important distinction to make there is that the framework does not promote at all a teaching to any test, but it's reflective, those results are reflective of the quality of the professional learning that often comes as a support with the program and really the development of students as readers and writers. If our students read and write well, it doesn't matter what reading prompt or task you will put in front of them or what writing demand is placed upon them, they should be able to handle it, no different than we as educated adults should be able to if we were looking at a third, fourth or fifth grade ELA assessment. So I just want to make sure that we distinguish that, that it by no means, because there are programs out there that are very much driven by, you know, test preparation and that, that is not the case here. It's really emphasized the professional learning and developing the identities of students as readers and writers themselves. So I'm glad that we, we have this opportunity here.
I, I actually have one more question and I'm not quite sure who to, to point it towards because it may be unfair for you and it may be unfair for you, maybe Anne is best. The, the question is, how, like, how has the entering population of students changed over time? What are the trends that we're seeing in the students that are coming into our school? And like Julia gets thrown into that one. Like, and what is that, how's that impact what we need to do?
Sure. I'll show a chart and so I'll, I'll take it if that's okay in my, in my presentation that provides a, and if anybody else wants to comment, you're welcome to. That shows that while our student population has remained relatively stable, we're, we're within 100 students of, you know, our peaks and valleys. The number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch has slightly increased over the years. So whereas as a district, we may have been somewhere around 6% or 7%, we're right around 12% or 13% now. That's probably the most significant, you know, hard data change that you will see. Our L population, our English language learners, has not shifted that much over the years. Again, I'll, I'll show a slide related to this. Right now we have 15 students in the district who qualify for English as a new language support. That's varied between, you know, as little as 12 if I look back, up to 15 this year. But it's not changing at the same rate as you would see those who are coming on, coming in with a certain level of economic need. Race and ethnicity I haven't looked at. Just looking at our state reporting, it doesn't jump out at me as a significant, any significant shift being made there. More often than not, we don't have enough students who, to, to qualify for certain data reporting on, on subgroups. Yeah, so that's my general perspective and I turn to the historian, Mr. Julie Sniffin, if there's anything else.
Okay, okay. But in terms of- Yeah, in terms of preparation or-
I would say social, emotional needs comes up a lot more now than Andrew Shaking.
Is that, do you think that's more awareness or more as a, as a core part of what the school and the school district should be doing and helping with or?
That's part of it.
Yeah. What?
The question you're asking, it's like, how much time do you have?
Yeah, well, I mean-
You know, I mean, that's a conversation that is like a huge-
Yeah, it's big.
-can of worms. Is it the technology? Is it media? Is it more awareness? Is it, I mean, it's like that conversation is-
Yeah, and we're going to spend some time at the end of the year talking about social, emotional learning programming. I reference it in my, in the report I'm about to provide. But I do think that we see some, some significant needs there in terms of the students who are, how they present in a, in a school setting that we are able to accommodate, but it's, it's a concern, a legitimate concern on the part of our community. I couldn't give the historical perspective, you know, Haldane generally now compared to where we were 10 years ago, but we can sit with that and certainly provide some more perspective to the board.
Thank you.
That's another area that jumps out.
Dr. Benanti, do you want to kind of skip around maybe? Do you want to do your presentation, then move on to special reports and-
Yeah, if that's okay.
...roll through the calendar?
Yeah. If I can, I'm just going to grab that file, that, my copy of the presentation and thank you. And Ms. Dineo, if you want to draw it up. Thanks. So Ann and I, yeah, so we're, we're at that point of the school year where there's going to be several presentations as we get into the budget season and obviously we have back-to-back meetings over the next two weeks, so get ready to dig in. Tonight's presentation was originally scheduled for the night of the Garrison Joint Board Meeting, so we kicked this back to tonight and to give that meeting its own space. Ann and I are going to co-present. Ann's going to take the first part of this, if you want to just, oh, I have it. Thank you, Dan. I'm sorry. And go through a couple of formalities here with respect to the governor's executive proposal, a quick summary on the governor's proposal and what, how that would impact Haldane and also the tax levy limit calculation because there is some information that we have to file now with the state in regards to the tax levy in the next couple of weeks. And then I will take it from there, provide some background information on our instructional program and provide some thoughts related to the budget development process at this point as it relates to program. So Ms. Dineo, I turn this over to you and-
Okay, just a couple of bits of information. The governor released his 1920 executive proposal and once again, Haldane got a a huge increase in foundation aid. It's a $4,136 increase in foundation aid. The other items are really a repeat of last year. He tries every year to put these things in and, and they, you know, so we're not going to really have to spend a lot of time on it because we'll probably see it again next year in the executive proposal. The formula aids, that there's no changes to the formulas. Next year, they're talking about caps. They're talking about perhaps combining 11 different categories of aid into one called the services aid. They've been trying for years to do this and cap the, the formula aids. The formula aids are that we're going to take this year's expenses and that's going to generate aid for next year, depending on our use. BOC's aid, transportation, depends on what our expenditures are. It's not just money given as a percentage increase. It is put into a formula based on our spending and that drives our aid for next year. Most of our aid is determined in that way. That again, they're talking about capping the annual growth in the STAR exemption at zero. It's been going up 2%. They've been trying to cap it at zero for years now. Doesn't affect our budget. So there's really, the, the biggest thing I can say is, woo-hoo, we're getting $4,000.
Is your expectation that, that will change or is that-
Last year, I think we did get a few thousand more with the final budget. I don't expect a windfall.
Yeah, sure, certainly.
So on to the tax levy limit for 1920. Our maximum allowable tax levy that requires a simple majority is a 2.71% increase. And we, as all districts, use the 2% for our allowable growth factor. It's the lesser of the CPI, which was 2.44% for 2018 or 2%. That gives us an increase in our tax levy for 1920 of $527,824. Reminding you that our rollover budget increase was 8.63. So the deficit there was 357,405. Reminding you that that's before any retirements and other proposed changes that you'll see next week in the proposal number one.
And that's again on just the rollover and not the piece we're going to discuss later, the curriculum. So that's the entire rollover budget rather than any answers, changes to the program?
That's correct.
And that the 2.71 is on the tax part of the overall revenue and the 4,000 whatever on the, on the foundation aid is probably less than a 2.71% increase?
Yes.
Okay, so got it. Great.
And this information we need to present tonight because it's, it's due to the state Friday, actually. So we want to make sure that you know what's being reported. Do you want me to do this one?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you recall, when we talked about the admin and, or the administrative and the capital components of the budget, there were similar slides. This is the program component. Again, it's back, we're starting in 1516. We're showing some actual expenditures for three years. The budget for the current year of 1819, what I project those expenses will be. And then the rollover is the, is the last column here and those are the numbers that have been provided already in the rollover budget. Again, we don't have our proposed numbers up here yet for 1920.
I think one thing we just want to distinguish, obviously, we're getting in, this is the meat and potatoes of the school budget right here. It's the folks who, who come together each day to provide the array of services to our students. So in terms of our, our budget for this school year and our projected, or our rollover budget for next year, it accounts for approximately 74% of, of the school budget.
Just a couple of quick questions, sorry. And sorry to just ask these off top. As I think, look at actual versus the budget for 2018, 2019. Okay, there was one that was interesting. The actuals for related employee benefits have been like 4.1, 4.0-ish and this year it was budgeted up at 4.8. Any particular, what's causing, what's causing that?
That's primarily medical, was the health insurance. That in the prior years, the consortium-
Yeah.
-were using a lot of their fund balance and those increases were 2%.
Managed, okay, managed lower.
And this year, the, the lid came off a little bit on using the fund balance and there was a bit of a spike in that area of the budget.
Okay. Would, would we expect to see similar in, with a cap increase this year? What, going forward, what do you think?
I do expect more of the same type of increase as this year, maybe 3%. They have been doing some things to really try to manage where they might have a two-person rate instead of a family rate for everyone. A two-person rate really manages that. They're going into different tiers. So they are being very proactive in trying to manage that because, you know, as we know, fund balance doesn't last forever.
Okay, cool. And just one more. What was the, what was behind the increase, the budget increase in people transportation?
Can I, can I actually ask a question related to that?
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to ask it.
I'm going to ask it. So one of the things Dr. Bowers did, I thought she was actually really pretty successful at, was actually really looking at transportation and trying to come up with efficiencies. And I think, I at least can see the possibility that she was successful doing that, because you can see from, you know, 2015 to 2017, it not only stayed stable, it went down, which then, I should have, I don't remember seeing the numbers lined like this last year, but I am wondering why, we know transportation is expensive, and so to build on John's question, why, why the increase?
And I do see a little red note on the projected 2018-19, so I'm sure there's interesting information there.
I mean, not that you can know all these numbers off the top of your head, but it's just a question that I have. It's not a question like, something's wrong, but like, clearly there are things driving these, these expenses and wanting to understand that better, because it is a, you know, there is this deficit that we know has a potential to be challenging.
Yes, absolutely. So I know that going into this year, we struggled at the end of 1718, because in consolidating and rerouting some route, transportation routes, we lost a lot of drivers. We lost a lot of part-time drivers. And the driving was then managed by our cleaner drivers, and some of the maintenance that we were leaning more on these combo positions for driving. So now with the reorganization that the board was supportive of earlier this year, we were able to hire maintenance worker drivers, and we have more of those combination positions. But then what I have to do is look at everyone and change their percentage of how much is being charged to operations, and how much is being charged to transportation, because transportation is one of those Formula Aids. And if we report more of what we're spending in transportation, then we increase our aid for the next year. So more driving from our combination positions was allocated to the transportation part of the budget, to be reflective of what's actually happening, but it's also benefit to us because it maximizes our transportation aid.
That's really helpful, thanks. And I'm going to re-say a little bit to make sure that my understanding is correct, but part of this shift to the, to the combination positions was also recognizing that finding these part-time drivers was difficult. It was something that was continually a struggle for the district. And this is a way, but we've got, we've got to have them. And this is a way for us to sort of increase our capacity in this, in these departments by having these folks who can serve these, these dual roles. And that's, that's a good thing.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
And also, isn't there, sorry. There is an offset. What we were seeing a lot of last year was overtime expenses, because they were playing this dual role. So we should almost see a little bit of an offset.
We still have some gaps to fill, and Mr. Botros is being really great in finding people to fill these positions, because, you know, it's not a real desirable position to come in for, and work for a couple of hours in the morning and drive, and then have a five-hour break, and then come back and do an afternoon run. That's what makes it so hard to fill these positions. So he's been helping and being very creative and managing, you know, as, it's a moving target with our Transportation Department.
Ann, at the bottom there, budget 1819 versus projected 1819, clearly there's a lot of things that are less in the projected column than the budgeted column. Is that, I'm assuming that is because we overbudgeted, or is that because we haven't gotten to the end of the year? Do you understand my question?
Well, the projec-, yes, I understand. I'm trying to formulate my-
Yeah, as I say it, yeah.
Just part of it is driven by some circumstances that we've encountered this year with staffing.
So it's actual, though, it's like, right now, right now, today, our projected 1819 budget is less than our, what we budgeted for it.
Correct.
So the numbers at the bottom are still the same for total budget, under the budget column and the projected column. Is that-
Because the budget hasn't changed. We're just going to spend less of it than we budgeted for. I, I don't like to say we overbudgeted.
I object to that.
I like to say that we budgeted based on what we thought, we anticipated our needs were going to be, and then some changes happen.
I see.
Right. So at the end of the school year, what you can anticipate, as we encounter each July, is that there may be funding that we had anticipated a need for, that we did not utilize, and what do we do with it? But needs come, things come up through the school year, and I can think of a few staffing things that you're aware of, where, you know, we may have a sub in a position at a much lower rate than a teacher that was anticipated to be there, and that, that drives, you know, there's a couple of examples of that this year that are going on, and then there's other scenarios that played out as well.
So that's exactly what I think I said before when we had this slide up. So the assumption is that that total budget line is the total of the column, and that is the percentage, the, you know, the 24,70,392 is the percentage of our total budget. So if it's the budget 2018-19 totals 24,70,392, and the projected is the same, then presumably the percentage numbers underneath should match.
I, I think what, what's driving that percentage number, and you're looking at 73.82%, and then subsequently 70.73%, correct?
Right.
Is the number on the last, in the first set of numbers, the total there. So budget for 1819, it was 17.7 million dollars, and projected for 1819 is 17.0 million dollars. And that's, that's the percentage that you're seeing result of. So we're, our laser doesn't show up on this screen, which makes this a little hard.
If you take this number-
So it's the percentage of that number of total, not of the total budget?
Is that percentage.
Correct.
And that, over that, again, total budget is a lower percentage.
Got it.
And if you went, and if you went back to the other ones, the, the sum of projections for 1819 of admin-
Correct.
-capital, and this, summed together, would not be 24,070392, it would be something less, because we're coming in under budget, because we found, yep. So, yep.
Yeah. Ready to proceed?
Absolutely.
So with respect to the curriculum and instruction program, while much of these costs are driven by salaries and benefits and company and costs that Ann had presented in the overview slide, there is some relevant information that I'd like you to consider and would like to share with you this evening that I think are indicative of the strength of our program, but also may point to some areas of need. So we have access to some good portals that allow us to show trends over time with respect to our program, that allow us to show some comparisons in relation to our peers in the area that I'm going to share with you this evening. I did, in many cases, as you'll see, share other school districts' name, and that's not necessarily to compare us directly to those school districts, it's just for perspective, because they're districts that we're close to or familiar with. Again, this is all publicly accessible information. So some, you know, boards or superintendents are maybe reluctant to do that, because they feel, you know, these comparisons are being made, or these, these illustrations are being made necessarily for comparisons purposes. That's not really my intention here, it's just to give some perspective on where we lie in relation to our peers. Hopefully this'll, you know, it'll talk us through this. And again, in future reports, I did say, starting with the administrative proposals, we'll provide you with this information ahead of time, so you have a chance to review it, or have it at hand as you're reviewing it here, because displays can, can sometimes be difficult. But this is our enrollment breakdown, so the bars represent our total enrollment. There's currently 834 students enrolled at Haldane. You'll notice that this bar stops at 2017. I'm pulling this information from state warehouses, and sometimes there's a lag in how the state warehouses our data. So you'll often see these figures stop at either 2017 or 2018. And where those do, I'll try to provide verbally where we are at this moment in time, if it's relevant. That blue bar, or I'm sorry, line that you see there is the percentage of students who are qualified for free and reduced lunch. John, this is what I was referencing earlier, so you'll see a slight upward trend over the last five years in that subgroup. And then there's a green line, a faint green line at the bottom there, which represents the trend of students who qualify for, as English language learners, or for English as a new language services. And you'll see that line has remained relatively flat over the years. This year, we have 15 students who qualify for English as a new language support, and the percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch this year is about 12%.
Dr. Banante, is it, is the new term ENL, or is it ELL?
It's ENL, but you'll-
I feel like they're a little interchangeable here.
They are interchangeable, because both terms have been used in the past, and it shifted to ENL at the state level, I believe in 2017. You'll see it's still used as ELL here, but in terms of state regulations, it's ENL. English is a new language.
Right, okay.
It used to be ELL, English Language Learning, or LEP, Limited English Proficient. So you'll see ELL slash LEP. I'm sorry to use all three, but-
It's okay.
In any document, depending on what you pull, you'll see one of the three, but it's ENL now. This is an overview of our staffing ratios over time, going back to 2009. So the orange bar represents teaching staff count, and you'll see that those figures hover right around 60. And you may see a point of a person, or a decimal after that, because we often have part-time staff who are working in our, in our district. So in 2018, our staff count is 62.269. Generally, we have 62, and we have a part-time teacher, or a collection of part-time teachers who are in our district. And this is relative to our total student enrollment. Now, you'll see this spike in 2017, and I did put a note here. The only way to explain this is that there was a discrepancy in how we reported our data in, in 2017 to the state. We did not have 60 teachers in 2016, lay off 14 of them, and then hire them back in 2018. That did not happen. And you've lived here, you know that. So there had to be some issue with what we reported in 2017. Our student population stayed relatively the same, but that's why you see that spike in terms of students to staff ratio in that year. Generally, you'll see we hover right around an average of 14 students for every educator in our, in our, in our school. This is inclusive K-12 teaching staff.
Does that include TA?
Special education does not include TAs.
Okay, just, okay, special ed.
Special education, anybody who's here as a teacher. This is class size and common branch. When we report information to the state, we report common branch in grades one through six. Kindergarten is not a required course, or class in New York State. I did not, I can still access that information, I just did not for purposes of this evening. And you'll see, I am providing information in relation to the Putnam, Northern Westchester, BOC's region. So these are all schools in Putnam and Northern Westchester. You'll often hear me refer to the PNW region, so these are those school districts. And for folks at home who, you'll be able to access this report online and follow along as I'm talking, but you may not be able to see this, you'll see Haldane is third from the top there. So our class size is, on average, in grades one through six, is 19 students for every teacher. And in relation to the region, we sit fairly high on this chart. Now, this is as of 2017. These numbers tend to stay stable over time. I could not call all of my colleagues and say, where are you at this year in this? That would have taken some considerable amount of time, but generally you see that these, these averages stay fairly consistent over successive years. You heard Mr. Wallach report on the elementary average class size tonight. The other principals may choose to do so. Now, I pulled this data for a variety of courses, so not just common branch, but also some courses through other areas in our, in our program. This is English VII, so we're at the top here in relation to our peers, so Haldane's the first bar. 14.3 students to every teacher. This is not to say you won't have pockets or exceptions, you know, someone always raises their hand and say, well, my son's in a class, and there's 24 kids in that class. It's true, there, there may be.
And this is seventh grade?
Seventh grade, yeah.
So this, depending on class size, this could-
Correct, it could vary, but on average-
Yep.
-that's where we are. And some of that, there's other variables in terms of what a student may be taking, what other, what other courses they're taking, if they're involved in music or not, that could influence when you're going into schedule in the summer. So as the principals are setting the master schedule up, that could influence what sections you have to place a student into because of the math class they take, or the science class they take. So that's why, that's some of what will drive that variability in how certain classes load throughout, throughout the year. Math VII, again, we're at the top here. Very healthy in comparison to our peers. Global History and Geography, which is a two-year course, so this is ninth grade. We are second from the top here. I'll just give you a moment to take it in, and then I'll proceed to the next slide. This is the 10th grade course, and we are at the bar at the top. I just want to transition to graduation rates. Really, all schools in Putnam County have very healthy graduation rates, are very good. This is a four-year graduation rate, so we report graduation at the end of four years, June, at the end of four years, including August, because some of our kids need to take an exam perhaps in the summer. We report a five-year graduation rate and a six-year graduation rate. So this is just the four-year, this is the four-year August graduation rate for districts in the, in the county. You'll see that Haldane, and this includes 2018 now, so this includes last year's August grads, and we're right at 100%. The state average is the thicker kind of line at the bottom there, which if memory serves, it's right around 80% or so across the state. Over the next few slides, I'm going to present student performance on Regents exams at the high school level. So this is for all students. I did not go into subgroup results here, although I'll speak to those later. And this is simply passing, so 65 or above on, on a Regents exam. I will speak to mastery rates later on, but you'll see for Earth Science, generally we're just above 80% of students passing the Earth Science exam. This is showing student results over a four-year period of time. Living Environment Biology, we're right around 95%. ELA, which is typically an 11th grade exam, although many of our sophomores are taking the now ELA exam in high school, that's English Regents, the former English Regents. Again, we're hovering right around 95% students passing the exam. I just want to go back to that. So I'll reference this later, but these are percentage passing. In terms of mastery, mastery is defined by New York State of the percentage of students who are scoring at 85 or above. It's a 100-point exam. Mastery rates really vary significantly. So on these four exams that I shared with you, while our overall passing rates hover around somewhere between 85 and 95%, our mastery rates are significantly lower. They're somewhere between 45% and 65% depending on the exam. David actually provided some of this information. This is just, just a different bar graph with respect to our ELA and mathematics assessments from last year. David is right, the state Education Department has asked us not to use the 2018 exams, because they were renormed, if you will, in comparison to other exams, yet the state still presents it on the report card in that way. And that, those were the images that David shared. So these are just the 2018 results. You will see that the first series of results are grades three through eight ELA, and then the next series of results are grades three through eight Mathematics. The yellow and green bars are representative of the stu- The yellow and green bars are representative of the students who scored at level three or above. The orange and red bars below are the students who scored at levels one or two. Okay, so it's just a different view on this. I don't control the views in the portal that I pull out. So, you know, I get what I, what I ask for to some, to some extent, and this is how they provide it to me. So you'll see that student performance kind of varies across the district. There's some areas where we do quite well in relation to our peers. And there's other areas that, you know, are worthy of further questions. An important point of this is you never want to look to one measure to judge how your students are doing in school. David did a nice job of providing the E L A and mathematical results at the elementary school, for example, but also looking at the N W E A results. And you'll notice that our, there's a, there's quite a difference between how our students perform on the E L A state exam versus how they perform on the E L A N W E A exam. So that becomes a good point of conversation for our educators as to why and what's driving that. And we, there are other factors that we also may want to consider when we're determining whether or not a student is at or above grade level in addition to just the state exam results. And it's important that we are doing that when we're having conversations about kids and student performance, that we're always looking towards multiple measures. That being said, this is a major one when it comes to school accountability. So you'll find that we'll use this as a basis in our reporting. One thing, one caveat I just want to mention here, under math, grade eight, so it's the farthest column on the right there, which looks significantly lower than all the others. Many of our eighth-grade students are accelerated in mathematics, so they're taking algebra and they're not reported here. So this is a very small subgroup of students in comparison to all the others, or I'm sorry, a group of students in comparison to all the other cohorts. You know, the number of students we have taking grade eight mathematics, as reported here, is significantly less than the cohort because many of them are in algebra. So one student is going to have a more significant influence on the overall percentage in that chart than, in comparison to the other, other grade levels there.
So would somebody jump from seven to nine on, or seven and then the next year they'd be off the chart? They wouldn't actually be captured?
Correct, because they're going from seventh-grade math to taking algebra.
Okay.
And our algebra students don't take this exam.
I don't know how that works.
One thing to note, and I've had this discussion, you know, in other settings. That being said, because we don't want that to just say, oh, don't look anything.
Right.
I think it's worthy of the question. So our students who aren't accelerated still should be able to meet grade-level standards. So, you know, I, I don't, we don't want to excuse it, it deserves its own attention. But I do have to distinguish who's included in that group for your purpose.
Okay, you have a mixed group up to some, and then you're.
Right.
Segmenting groups.
Yep. Okay. So projected costs, and there's just one, a series of costs in terms of professional development or professional learning that I want to give an overview for. This is a very staff-rich area, so that first overview that Ann had provided obviously is where the majority of costs lay. But in terms of professional and curriculum development, here's just an overview of our actual expenses over the last few years and our budgeted expenses for this school year. So you'll see, and we'll change our headers there, our function and object headers, it's just, you know, we're pulling this out of Excel. We, we do budget for curriculum development writing. Outside conferences and workshops. A significant expense here was the new tech contract that you're familiar with. And then other BOSI's conferences and workshops and BOSI's professional development. Teachers College is through BOSI's, so that work that David, they're a partner with BOSI. So that allows us to just realize some savings in contracting with them, but that work would be included in here. And that's, you know, that's expensive work and that's, it's not all of it. There's other professional development opportunities we access through BOSI's, but Teachers College is probably the most significant cost. The new tech line is the one that's most significant here. Okay. The dip here from actual seventeen, eighteen on staff development, outside conferences and workshops, you'll see that we were hovering around fifty-six, sixty-four, fifty, down to twelve. If I'm not mistaken, that's because we were sending teachers away as a part of the new tech work. So that, this year, we did not do. New tech came to us, so you'll see a significant reduction in the cost there. We do have some additional revenue streams. There, it's not a lot, but through our federal grant, so Title I, which is Title I funds are driven for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. It's funding we receive from the federal government for that. Title II A are federal funds we receive for professional development, staff development. And Title III are fundings we would receive for limited English proficient, E N L students, and we don't receive any funding for those students from the federal government. So just an overview of what we received over the last few years. Our federal grant funding isn't established until the summer, when we're already in the school year. So it's best to anticipate no increase to that funding. We don't get a lot of it, but you can see there has been some variability over the years. We'd rather end up with a little bit more and great, we'll put it to good use than a little, yeah, a little less. But you typically will not see these funds shift dramatically unless your student, driven by student counts, unless your student counts shifted dramatically in any one area.
And I can't do the, I can't do the math that quickly, but this is way below one percent of our budget. I mean, this, federal funding accounts for just a very small, such a small portion.
Correct. Yes, districts that have very high free and reduced lunch numbers will receive a significant amount of funding under Title I and may have several staff salaries incorporated into that. And then if you hear at the federal level that there's projected cuts to Title I, you know, that, that would obviously be a cause for great concern for districts who were funding several positions under that. We're not really in that situation here. We do use these funds typically to offset salaries, and that's something we've chosen over the years to do. That's something that on an administrative level, I'd like to sit with just for a little while longer. Not so much under Title I, but under Title II A. Because, well, we'll get into it if, if we decide to make any changes to it, but I'm getting ahead of myself, so. We do receive textbook aid from the state, and I thought this was relevant. There's some important things to note here. So the state provides us with a certain level of aid per student for the purchase of textbooks. It's about fifty-eight dollars per student. And I've noticed over the years here, we, our aid amount is the top row, but we've overspent our aid amount. So that's usually a cost we should keep consistent or keep around whatever our aid allocation is. Yeah, so over the last four years, you know, we're going to come in around roughly over a hundred thousand dollars what we're receiving aid in. And I'm not sure, I, I think we can keep those figures pretty close to one another with good planning, with good planning. And when you've heard me speak to district goal, I believe it's one, with respect to K-12 alignment and curriculum reviews and putting ourselves on a schedule for curriculum reviews, often when you're doing a curriculum review, that's when there becomes a need for perhaps a new textbook. And textbooks are a major expense. And again, we receive about fifty thousand dollars in textbook aid each year. We want to make sure we're budgeting and we're, we're operating on a curriculum review cycle that's respectful of this number because we may not be in a position to buy three major textbooks in one year. But if with planning, we can anticipate that, well, this year maybe we'll replace the math textbook at the elementary level. The following year, maybe it's the math textbook at the middle school level and so on. And often textbook companies will, if you're, you're in the need to purchase, will work with you in scheduling your payments over a period of time. So if you needed, if you need to be in a position where you have to replace two or three textbooks in a, in a given year, you can schedule the cost or the payment out again, so it's falling aligned with whatever your textbook aid is and you're not impacting your general fund allocation somewhere else to, to accommodate this. So that's something we need to pay attention to moving forward.
This is, the textbook aid is not one of those formula-driven aids where we, we get a lot of it back the next year. It's a set amount and it hasn't changed in years.
Could we assume that there's been a shift in the use of textbooks based on the increase in technology? Or has there not?
Somewhat. More often than not now, you see that there's still a desire on the part of schools to have a hard, a physical textbook and that as textbook companies have moved to digital versions, you're paying the same cost for, for both. So my experience has been that while there may be a shift and schools have moved towards a digital platform for accessing text, the costs don't vary that much at all.
Interesting.
We do receive some library aid as well, and these are not big numbers, but you'll see here, we've, for the most part, stayed, our expenditures have stayed consistent with what our aid is, so that's good. All right. So some general thoughts, and again, some of these are thoughts that I've shared, and I wanted to frame these in a way. So if anybody from the public was viewing this, they could understand our thinking going in, especially into next week's administrative recommendation with respect to any program element. We provide, I, I really do believe we provide our students with an exceptional experience through our K-12 program without a doubt. And you see our students perform very well. We have very small class sizes that we can maintain through our entire program. We have a very dedicated faculty and staff. I could not be more impressed with the professionalism of our staff when it comes to exploring new ways of thinking and new ideas that have been brought in this year. And I, and I do think the focus on the deeper learning work over the last few years have really contributed to some outstanding results for our academic-related areas. When we look in, dig into some of our student performance results, while most of our students pass the Regents exam, only two-thirds demonstrate mastery of learning standards on these exams, and I think that's something we need to sit with because I, I think we should be working towards driving all students to mastery. And the fact that we have all students and, or the far, the preponderance of students passing these exams is great, but we don't want to rest on that. We should be examining if students can access even higher levels of learning in the time that they have with us here at Haldane. I am concerned about, and I've been, I think I've been candid about this, about not having a dedicated strategy to expand our social-emotional learning experience throughout our K-12 program. And that's an area we're going to need to give further attention to. We have pockets of good things happening, but I wouldn't say it's a dedicated strategy where we can guarantee that every student is having an exceptional social-emotional experience that has explicit instruction perhaps in, in certain areas for them, to put them in a position to handle the variety of social experiences they're going to have outside of, of Haldane. So our parameters for budget development included maintaining current levels of programming. That was a parameter that the board had established with me back in, in December. And our recommendation next week is going to honor that to the greatest extent possible. That's a priority for us, so I want to be upfront about it. There are several areas for growth that I want to be more explicit in, that I think have to be accounted for or that we're accounting for in our work for next school year. The development of a curriculum review cycle and budget, okay? So we kind of get out of that mode of overspending at times in areas where maybe there's needs we could have anticipated with planning that we didn't anticipate that ended up driving costs, you know, you know, in certain years. So that's thus keeping our spending consistent with our aid allocations wherever possible. We really need to review our academic intervention program here. I spoke to multiple measures. Students who are not meeting grade-level standards, whether it be by the state assessment measure, by our N W E A measures, by teacher observation, whatever that may be. We want to consider what the level of support looks like around them and ask our question, is what we're currently doing to support those students effective? As I've had some conversations with our staff with respect to that, the feeling is, very well-intentioned program, don't feel that it's as effective, as effective as it could be. So that'll become a, an area that we really need to examine going into next school year. We're at a point where we need to examine our deeper learning work throughout our K-12 program. We're going to move away from new tech network, but we still should own the work. Doesn't mean the work and the focus on deeper learning experiences for our kids goes away. So we have to make sure we give good attention to that, so that work continues. So I'm getting into my thoughts here. We also need to consider how to best coordinate work associated with a shift in learning standards. I would say if there's something that, you know, keeps me up at night, it's, it's, it's this stuff here. It's the fact that we have major shifts in learning standards occurring across each core content area. It's happening in science, it's happening in E L A, it's happening in mathematics, it's happening in social studies. We're in progress in some of that work, we're in the middle of it. David alluded to that at the elementary level. Or it's to come in other content areas. Whenever you're changing learning standards, that has a significant impact on staff because we're asking teachers literally to change what they're doing, what they may have been doing with students for twenty years or twenty-five years, and to examine it and do it differently. And that takes a lot of time, attention, and coordination. I spoke to the social-emotional learning piece already. And then the last piece here is, there is a discrepancy, David noted it in his report, between the performance of our special education students and their ability to meet grade, demonstrate proficiency of grade-level standards and their general education peers. That's a big deal. When we have sixty or seventy, eighty percent of our general education students demonstrating that they're, they're at grade level, but only twenty percent of our special education students demonstrating that they've met grade-level standards. We provide a lot of support to our students, our special education students, to resolve that gap in learning. So again, similar to A I S, this is a, this is an area that we're going to need to give further attention to. Certainly, it'll be a topic that we discuss with all the candidates for the director of P P S role, but that has an impact on staff. What I want to emphasize though, it's not just a special education issue. We should be looking at, looking at it as all of our students and as our students are in inclusive learning environments and our co-taught environments, this is a general education and special education issue. I don't want to just rely on, you know, a, a new leader coming in and, and it's their issue to solve. It's all of our issue to, to solve. So here's the transition, and I think this is my last, yep, this is my last piece. Sixteen out of eighteen of the districts in the BOSI's region, and I've used those schools as a point of comparison, have an administrator who oversees curriculum and instruction. Haldane and Garrison do not. Being the two smallest school districts in the region, that doesn't surprise me. However, by paying off the N T N contract early, we have the ability to contract with BOSI's for support in curriculum and instruction leadership. So we, you know, we're in a unique position here where we have a very progressive BOSI's who can provide a level of support or coordinate a level of support to oversee this area or help facilitate some of this work that I've pointed to at a very reasonable cost. So while the long-term question may remain that, should we have a dedicated person? Should Haldane have their own person in this role? I think taking a step to contract with BOSI's and include this in our BOSI service request for next year will have the least financial impact on our school district, but will have a profound impact on the, our ability to coordinate program for our K-12 students and address several of the areas that I, I listed previously. So my, and it's just a little teaser, I guess, in that my recommendation next week, and I'll speak to it a bit more, will include having, contracting with BOSI's for a level of support to the curriculum and instructional program. But I think in a way, that's pretty respectful of our budget and, you know, perhaps our history as well with this. At this point, if there's any questions.
Well, I, I, you did an amazing job of presenting so much information. I'm oftentimes sort of thinking about, okay, what's the piece of information that I want to sort of rise to the top? And if you could go back to the slide about the change in standards.
Yeah.
That, I like to think of myself as someone who keeps my finger on the pulse of education, and I have to say, this slide really caught me off-guard. It caught me by surprise. I knew about N G S S, the, the science standards, I asked about it. I know that we're in the process of revamping our social studies curriculum. I mean, more and more, we're hearing people talk about the importance of that and, 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 you know, creating folks who are able to go out and become citizens, but the fact that it's across every single major academic domain and social-emotional learning is just.
Stunning.
Just really stunning. And I, I do want to, I really, to me, this is the most important slide in your, in your deck.
Okay. I forgot to mention that we're also in this era of the shift to the every-student-succeeds accountability measure.
Right.
It's a pretty important one, and we should talk more about that some, some night. But, you know, the accountability standards for our schools are, are changing. And that, you know, the accountability standards for our schools are changing, and that you can really get into the weeds on, and we could spend a couple hours. I spent two days in Albany on that last year, and I'll never get those days back.
Right.
But it's really complicated.
Right.
But, more comprehensive review of school quality. And I think, again, having leadership in the area of curriculum and instruction will help make sure as we make this transition to new accountability targets for our schools, there's plenty to look at, you know, to your point, Peggy.
No, I mean, because there's those two issues. I mean, and I guess this isn't the only one, but it's the shift to the standards, but also a recognition of the fact that, yes, we, you know, as great as Haldane is, there is definitely more that we can be doing, particularly for kids who are struggling academically. And we know that's what our teachers and administrators want to do, and so setting up the structures so that kids are meeting their goals, and our staff are meeting, you know, their goals for wanting to help these kids.
And I think with that transition away from New Tech, we were budgeting approximately $70,000 a year for New Tech. And with the level of support we can get from BOSI's, it's around, that's the net cost to our district. So, not that when you're presenting a budget, it's, you know, you're swapping out this for that, but generally, we're going to have costs that we were anticipating for next year off the books, and it puts us in, it's an opportunity. It puts us in an opportunity perhaps to address an area of need, you know, before, you know, that need to become so immense that we're, you know, we're stressed and trying to figure out what to do.
So, I have a little bit, I have a few more questions about the contracting with BOSI's for curriculum instruction piece. Is that something that you're going to talk more about next week?
Yeah, I'll provide more of an explanation, but feel free to ask, but I will provide more of an explanation and put some information in slide deck, so for the public who may be accessing it, because it will be a part of my recommendation, but if there's a question you have now...
Or maybe you could just listen to the questions and include it in your answers next week, if you want to.
That works for me, too.
So, things I'm thinking about are, you know, you talk about this K through 12 curriculum that really needs to get developed and shifted, and that seems like a long-term plan to me. It seems like it doesn't just happen in one year, it wouldn't just happen with one year of a contracted service. It seems to me like that would be something that's kind of an ongoing need, and it would certainly be a couple of years in.
Correct.
So, with like a contracted position, is that something that we could count on having, like, one person, the same person, that would be a good fit for us for a long-term
Right.
service? Or would it be more like, oh, we have them for one year, but it doesn't keep going for the next year, because they're a contracted position, they're not really like...
Correct.
...an employee of Haldane? So, that's just something that I wonder about, if that, how that would all...
It's a good question, and it's a, we'd not want to call it a risk, but that's something you have to accept in working with BOSI's as opposed to hiring your own staff. I don't think hiring one, a part-time staff in that area, we would sacrifice quality, because I don't think there's very many administrators who are looking for part-time work, most want full-time work. So, that becomes a quality issue in that regard. So, BOSI's becomes potentially a nice bridge, if you will, while we continue to have, I believe we could, we have needs to support full-time, a full-time person. I don't think our budget can support a full-time person for next year without getting into some value decisions that I don't want to get into and put before you, or put before our community for vote, because I think there'd be perceived trade-offs. So, I'm trying to, you know, if we didn't have a tax cap, I think we could justify the need for a full-time position and go for it. But we live in an era where we have to be respectful of what our overall cost is and what we're putting before the community. So, to include a full-time person, I think we'd have to unfortunately make reductions in areas where I'm not quite comfortable recommending a reduction in. So, that's part of, so, those other risks, if you will, that you brought up are something I'm willing to deal with for a year, or after this year, if possible, because I think even in one year's time, having a good person in place, we can get a lot done. And maybe it serves as a bridge, maybe after that year, we're in a different position where we can talk about whether or not Haldane should have its own person. But for now, I think it's the best we can do, and that's, I feel that responsibility to put something in front of you that represents our best thinking, you know, in some ways, in the spirit of the work, but also financially.
I want to thank you for the much thought that went into this presentation. It's quite evident that you've spent a great deal of time. I like the forward vision...
Thanks.
...thinking that you're presenting, and I am along the terms of that we have to start somewhere. So, I think you asked a great question, but I also like the fact that Dr. Benanti is thinking about what we can do to get the ball rolling...
Right.
...right away. So, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
You know, it was an amazing presentation. I mean, there was so much information in it, and presented in a way that I found very, very accessible, very well scaffold, you scaffolded my understanding well.
Logical.
Appreciate that.
Very logical.
Yeah.
It is.
Anne and I are going to reward ourselves by leaving our offices for an hour tomorrow, because that's where we've been for the last two weeks.
Well, thank you.
They're small offices.
I just wanted to say, certainly, given the districts, given the goals that you laid out at the beginning of the year for the district, this would be the culmination of the curriculum piece, which I cannot even imagine, or in part, a start to a full execution on that vision.
Correct.
I can't imagine, begin to understand all the complexities that would go into, like, assessing, assessing new programs, assessing what we have, trying to make consistency across, that's a lot of work. And in a lean district like this one, I cannot understand that that comes and goes, it totally makes sense. I think you may have buried the lead on paying off New Tech Network, because I'm not, well, I think we may have known, I'm not sure that that was, okay, fine, we can talk about that later.
I'll explain more next week in the proposal, because I think that's the unique piece here.
Yep.
And I treat the proposal next week as what I present to the community. So, remember, there's several community engagements that are attached to that. So, it'll be framed a bit differently. So, I understand the board, we've talked about that, but you're right, it needs to be a little bit more front and center. You know, it needs to be the lead, if you will, for folks in the community, because it's something that they're very familiar with. And it's a transition we're making, and it's an important one, I believe. I'm sorry to interject, but it's a fair assessment, and I appreciate your feedback on that.
And I'm not sure where you could look at it this way, but you can tell me if I'm right, you could argue that the New Tech Network investment was an investment in curriculum and a type of curriculum development, and we're replacing that curriculum development with a more holistic, different type of holistic...
Yes, and a level of internal support, I would say, as opposed to an external facilitator. There's times for external facilitators, you know, we're working with Teachers College right now, but that's not meant to be forever. You know, at some point, you have to, I think the goal is to put yourself in a position where you can own the work among the staff that you have on hand. I do think having defined leadership in curriculum and instruction is something that really benefits districts. And we were at a time where, there was a time where it was appropriate for that to be the superintendent and the building principals, and the department leaders. But I think that time is behind us because of the extent of the changes that are, you know, we're in the middle of, and also the expectations that the community has for the quality of program in its schools. And, you know, the higher those expectations are, and I would never argue them, I think the more we need to talk about, okay, who is the defined leader to make that happen. And, you know, so it's a support that many districts lean on, having someone who has a background and an expertise in education in that. I'm biased, it's what I did for five years, you know, in my previous work, so of course I feel there's a lot of value to having a position like that in your school district. But striking the right balance between how it's structured, the money, what you're willing to spend on it, is something that I think can vary by district. So, in some districts, it's a split role. You know, in our district, what I'm proposing is that it be a shared service role. So, you know, I think that can look different depending on the community culture.
Cool. And I just have two, like, tactical questions. I didn't grow up in New York State, so I didn't go through the Regents. I understand Regents and mastery and the need, how does, how does looking at Regents as a measure of academic prowess in high school differ from looking at AP? And what should, how should you consider what we should think about?
If you want to chime in, at any point, you're welcome to, but I, no, 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 I'm going to answer, but Andy, you may have a perspective on that. I think for many years, the Regents exam system in New York, going back to like the 80s and 90s, it was the gold standard in, you know, in the region, meaning United States region, if not the country. It was often cited as an example of exemplary measures for accounting for student learning. There is not, I'd be cautious to draw a correlation between a Regents-level programming and an AP-level programming. AP is really designed to be a measure of college readiness. The Regents exams, to some extent, are supposed to be as well. It's difficult to correlate the two. What has happened is that many schools now, AP has become a part of school ratings and rankings, and it's somewhat driving the bus when it comes to how schools are evaluated and performed. There's quality AP offerings out there that our students take part in, but I, you know, I think sometimes it's being driven more by its AP than by, you know, student interest and engagement and, you know, kind of liberal arts kind of stress or structure that the Regents exam was really designed to emphasize. So, you know, the structure, and I don't think I'm answering your question, John, because it triggers so much for me, because I have strong feelings about AP and kind of what the impact it's had on our schools and on our kids. But I think it's difficult, it's important for us to offer quality courses in both ultimately, for our kids, because it influences and has an impact on what their opportunities are outside of Haldane. But we want our Regents exam or Regents courses to be of very high quality. You know, I went through a majority of Regents exam program as a student, I had excellent teachers, and I thought it really prepared me for college. It's tough for me to accept that now that's not perceived as the preparation pathway for college, that it's all AP. It's difficult for me to accept that, because that was the Regents exam for many years. The mastery designation, just back to a point you made, is something that's fairly new, that, and sometimes these are, these are barometers that the state sets in defining what mastery is. So, for the Regents, it's 85 or above. And when the state extrapolates data over multiple years, they use Regents exam mastery rates to compare to students who entered college-level coursework at state institutions successfully without the need for remediation. So, if you're performing at 85 or above, generally, it's an indicator that you are on path to access a state-level university setting without the need for remediation.
Got it. Okay.
Because that's what the state has access to.
Makes sense.
Right.
Do you have any thoughts on AP versus Regents?
Not to put you on the...
Oh, no. So, usually, from what I've noticed, APs are more geared toward upperclassmen. I think sophomore year, you can only take a maximum of one, while senior year, you can take up to five. And I've noticed that usually...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you can graduate with a Regents degree without taking any APs.
And then APs are for the students who want more of a challenge, where you might finish your minimum curriculum with Algebra II sophomore or junior year, but then senior year, you can take AP Statistics or AP Calculus, and that's the same for physics, and, you know, for AP US History, things like that. I do also agree, I think that the APs are becoming more of the standard as opposed to the way it might have been. I'm not exactly sure how it used to be, but I do, I do think that, I've noticed, APs are becoming very important, and not taking them has become very different than it used to be, or from what I'm told what it used to be.
My only other one question, I was interested in how you talked about the performance of special ed students in general populations. Remind me, what's the number of special ed students within the district? Is it one...
Approximately 12%.
Approximately 12%.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, okay, great, thank you. That's a significant portion.
It'll vary by grade level, too, pretty significantly, we're small.
Yeah.
So, just something to note, in my, the data I pulled here doesn't demonstrate it well, but depending on the cohort, so, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, for example, we may have 10 to 15 students in one grade level who are students with disabilities. We may only have three or four in another one. So, I'll be wary of when I'm presenting information, of trying to define how many students we're really talking about, because again, one student, if we're talking about a group of three or four, could really influence those numbers.
I actually thought that was interesting in that data, that the, if you look at like the third grade, their ELA math were pretty aligned.
Yes.
Same thing with like the sixth grade, with the fifth, you know, it was, they were balanced via their cohort, and there could be a very different level depending on their cohort.
Correct.
We've talked about that previously, that, you know, some grades, some cohorts perform very differently than the year before them, or the year after them, and there's anomalies, and it's not always predictable.
No.
Yeah.
Especially in a smaller school system.
Right.
We'll see that a little bit more.
Thank you.
Okay.
You can return to your seat now.
Thank you.
I actually just have a really quick question. I noticed on the graph, the number of students cumulatively in the whole school district was slowly going down, I think since 2010. Is there any reason to believe that that trend might continue?
Something we don't know.
I'm asking for a quick break.
But that was, that's why we should consider conducting an enrollment report. So, there's services that we can contract with, which will examine birth rates in the area, in the county, as well as real estate development and whatnot, so we can better anticipate what, if any, fluctuations in student population that we're likely to experience over the next five years.
All right, thank you.
And that's something we may want to consider, because I think we're at that time where new ones do.
We've been considering, however, it seems like...
You can push it aside for something else.
Yeah, our allocated funds that we're allowed to use for these types of reports seems to, every year, get pushed aside.
Well, I'm having good luck with Anne this year in what I ask her for money, she tends to...
No, it's not necessarily Anne.
I'm not, I'm just saying that I think we should ask Anne.
Well, we have a good chance of studying, but it never happens.
Understood. We may be in a position where this year, we can support that, because as you can see, we're coming under budget on certain program areas, so perhaps it's something we want to try to do now while we have the funding to do, or at least contract.
Anne do not let us do anything else besides a demographic study this year.
That's the problem, we always get this close.
Yeah, if you wait, something will come, that's for sure. The next piece I have is the calendar discussion for next year. There should have been a copy of the calendar incorporated into your minutes of the meeting. I have a copy here, I didn't bring extra hard copies. As you'll note, we did, we're proposing a different format for the calendar for this year, I just think it's a little easier to read.
Two thumbs up.
Two thumbs up on the format. Second, great, third?
I already told you that's...
Format adopted. You'll, just a couple of other things in terms of process. So, we first received the BOSI's calendar, and we work off of the BOSI's calendar. So, our calendar is largely consistent with the BOSI's calendar for next year. We have a number of students who attend BOSI's for programs, so it's, as a rule of thumb, it's helpful to work off of the BOSI's calendar and keep them as consistent as possible in school year, for each school, excuse me. So, that's a main driver, if you're wondering, how do we go about creating the calendar? There's also some contractual things we have to be mindful in terms of what's the, when can the first day of school be, sometimes that's influenced by contract. When the Regents exams are, that's driven by the state, obviously. You'll see several holidays and recesses included, report card conferences. You will not see two-hour delays for professional development, we're not proposing those for next year. So, you will not see them noted on the calendar. And you'll see four superintendents' conference days, which is what we're allowed to schedule by. And you'll see four superintendents' conference days, which is what we're allowed to schedule by, by state law, without impacting our state aid allocation. So you'll see four days spreaded throughout the year that are largely consistent with the days we've utilized in the past for superintendent's conferences. We meet with a committee of teachers and CSEA representatives to discuss the school calendar. So they've each had the opportunity to review this, provide me with feedback, and we made some adjustments based on their feedback to the calendar. And really, at this point internally, we're at a point where we're comfortable with this, but we're now ready to present it to the board for discussion. If you have any questions, certainly feel free to ask, hopefully I'll have an answer. And if, if and when we feel good about this, we'll put it up for adoption or for board action at a subsequent meeting.
So this was always Evan's thing, Evan was always the one that came up and checked it, so.
You want us to forward it to him?
Something that absolutely jumped off the page here is Memorial Day recess. How did you pass this by all the high school teachers and the high school principal?
This has Julius support, so, there was a, there's a couple of high school. It's after APs as well.
It's after APs, but right before Regents exams, and that's always seems to be the. Well, teachers like the most time they can, right?
Teachers are, the week, two weeks before APs are always so crazy, because they got to finish all the curriculum, they got to get everything ready for the test, and, yeah, any days off in that period can really disrupt a lot of workflow.
I actually really liked the idea of that super-long weekend around Memorial Day, because it creates a break before people are going into the last stretch of school, and oftentimes, when it's a Friday-Monday break, we lose the Friday to a snow day, but this way, you still have a chance, right? The first day that would go would be the Thursday. I actually really like, I don't even have a kid in school, and I really like this calendar.
We haven't seen that in several years, so I was just, that was the one thing that jumped off. I actually like it as well, I'm just.
That being said, the twenty-first is the first makeup day, if we. I believe this is where, one, the BOSI's calendar had two scheduled days off for Rosh Hashanah, September thirtieth, and then also October first. That was something, that was the one area we wanted to move away from what BOSI's had on their calendar, so then we had that day, and we placed it on the Memorial Day weekend as opposed to other areas, so.
But we've never had two days off.
We haven't, and it's not common, it was kind of, at least in my experience, that hasn't been common, so.
Did you have a chance to compare it to Garrison's?
No, but we requested Garrison's calendar today, so.
I went on, I tried to get onto their board docs tonight to look and see if I could pull it up, and I couldn't even get onto their board docs to find it. But that's always an issue with the rec department, that's always the issue with aftercare.
And also sports teams that we've, you know, modified teams that play together, or siblings that are in the elementary and over here in the.
I certainly don't mind reaching out to Garrison just to see what, how their calendar shapes up in comparison to ours.
Even just like aligning like the February break and the April break, that would probably be really helpful for parents.
And then when does graduation happen, then?
Twenty-seventh, twentieth.
No, it's the twentieth.
Twentieth.
So it's the twentieth, so it's in the middle of Regents.
So there's still half of that, it's usually chemistry and physics and one other usually half of that.
But the seniors usually don't take those exams most.
They'll be the juniors, that'll be the second week.
Typically. And it's usually exams you don't need to graduate.
Got it.
Okay, so it's for your review, so please take some time, and we'll keep it on as an item until the board feels ready. I have some information, obviously, to get for you, but when the board feels ready, we'll then transition to having it on as an action item. Okay, that concludes my part, I think.
Moving on to item E, the committee minutes from the wellness meeting from January twenty-eighth, as well as the health and safety minutes from the February fourth meeting are there for review. And moving on to information reports, start with Andrew.
All right, so as many of you know, last week, we had about fifty students go to the ski trip up to northern Vermont to Stowe, and it was a massive success. And so on behalf of the whole club, I'd like to thank Mr. Graff for organizing the whole trip, as well as some of the administrator people here, Ms. Horn and Mr. Manny, for being chaperones on the trip. Additionally, the peer mentoring group ran their yearly Random Act of Kindness Week this last week, and even though the weather kind of messed with a few of the days, every day, there's a theme that students are meant to either compliment a teacher, or the favorite one is high-five as many people as possible. And this year, we changed it up by actually having a small reward at the end, I think, a T-shirt for the person who did it the most. And it was, it was a pretty big success, so I think overall, we're going to try to keep that next year and try to spread it even more. So thank you.
Great, thank you for those updates. How's the play coming along?
Definitely coming along. I'm lucky that my cast doesn't have to go today, that's why I'm here. Not, can't, not sure if I can say the same about next week, though, but the play's definitely coming along. We're starting our tech weeks now, so costumes, fittings on this weekend, microphones should be coming soon, props, everything's coming together. It's going to be really exciting.
Great, and that's next weekend?
Or the fifteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, so we still have a bit of time.
Okay, good. Mr. Rollick, did you have anything to add? I know you just.
My colleagues are telling me to just say no, but I'll very briefly, very briefly mention some things that I would have mentioned no matter what, even if I hadn't presented earlier tonight. February fifteenth was our one-hundredth day of school at the elementary building. That is a big deal, especially for our younger students, our kindergarten and first grade students. If you've seen the most recent issue of PCNR, there's a color photo above the fold on page one of some of our kindergarten students dressed what they think they would look like if they were a hundred years old. Very, very cute, big day about a week and a half ago. Also, if you walk through the aisle, the aisles, the halls of our school, it looks like the aisles of Foodtown right now. We have, we're participating in the district-wide food drive that's going on, it concludes on Thursday of this week. But at the elementary level, we've challenged each of our classrooms to collect one hundred items of food by the one-hundredth day of school. So our classes, our students and our families have been very, very generous with that, all sorts of donations. And what's, what's interesting is that the donations help people right here in our community. They go to the Phillips Town Food Pantry, and, you know, we think, oh, the need for food might be somewhere else, but unfortunately, the need for food occurs in this community as well. So the tremendous effort by our students and their families and our teachers, and that will help families in need right here in our community. So that's as short as I can do it for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Silke.
I will also keep it brief, but I will remark that when I was doing my board report, I was like, wow, it's been a very, very, very busy month. So just a couple of highlights, I just want to thank all of the people that are on the M-CIT. We had an amazing community read, about a hundred family members, students and faculty came together to discuss the book Counting by Sevens, and it was a really lovely night. We're looking forward to March twentieth, the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. Thanks to Heidi Stevens, our middle school VP for the PTA, and the PTA, and Jeff Sniffin, the sixth-grade team leader, came together, and they're bringing the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival to present Julius Caesar on March twentieth for all of the middle school. And this Friday, cast members of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival, that's really hard to say, like all in a row. They are coming to work with our sixth graders, all of our sixth graders, on the language of the day, so that when they see the presentation, they'll be able to understand it. So a big thank you to them as well.
Sounds exciting.
Dr. Silke, can I just ask you a quick question? It's actually about something in the Wellness Committee report. There was a mention that you and Danielle were working on a, kind of like a mental health overview or status report of all of the services, could you just talk a little bit about that?
Yes, so there's a lot of subcommittees of the Wellness Committee, and one of the subcommittees of the Wellness Committee is the Mental Health Subcommittee, and that's basically Danielle and I. And we are working to kind of audit or see all the places where social-emotional learning and mental health live in the K-12 curriculum, because there are a lot of places where that type of work is going on. So we wanted to kind of just take stock of that. And a serendipitous event, although I don't know that everybody would feel this way about it, because it's a lot of work, is that the guidance plan is up for being redone, right? So, so it actually turned out to be serendipitous for Danielle and I, because as part of the work for updating the K-12 guidance plan, we have to do the same type of audit. So what the principals did was we sent out to all of our faculty a fact-finding sheet to write down, share what they do in terms of social-emotional learning, mental health, and then there's a couple of other parameters in the guidance plan, like career and college readiness and direct study skills. So that, that information has been rolling in. Danielle and I did meet once to go over the preliminary findings, and then it was sent out again to collect a little bit more information. The administrators have a guidance plan meeting on Monday, so we'll take a look at that second spinout of fact-finding. And I hope to, you know, my detailed report is going to have a lot about what's going on SEL in the middle school, and I hope that our work with the Wellness Committee and with the guidance plan will be helpful to Dr. Benante as he formulates his SEL report for later on this school year.
Great.
Thank you.
Just going to dovetail on your question and say, Putnam Northwest, just through BOSI's, which again, we can't say enough good things about, but they are having a roundtable discussion with guidance counselors in the area on the eleventh, and we actually have representatives going down to that meeting as well, which will be part of that same process. Just real quick to highlight, I guess the debate team was at Harvard last weekend. They won in two different categories, two different times, and a quote from Mr. Kotman, who took the high school debate team there, said, "More importantly, our students met people from all over the world and had a fabulous opportunity of collaborating with different people." This weekend, they head to Bard, along with the middle school debate team, they're going up together. Just to mention some of the curricular work that is going on, as Dr. Benante was mentioning, there's a lot of changes and shifts that we are seeing in regards to textbooks. We will be taking some time to look specifically at the sciences, grades six through nine, so that'll include the earth science as well. We'll do a lot of that work on Super Ten's Conference Day. And in addition to that, as it relates to curriculum, the math standards, we are looking at making major shifts in. We did some within the eighth grade, we're looking at seventh grade, and then rolling up into geometry and Algebra II, and we'll be continuing more of that work on Super Ten's Conference Day.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Benante said earlier, I just wanted to congratulate our girls varsity basketball team for winning the Class C Section Championship. Our girls are playing next Tuesday at five o'clock at Mount St. Mary against the Section Nine representative. That game is on Thursday, so we're going to play Millbrook or SS Seward. So we'll see how our girls do, but we want to wish them best of luck and congratulate them on what they've done so far. I'm also going to look at my phone real quick, just to make sure I have my numbers correct. I want to congratulate Haline Senior Ashley Haynes, who in her indoor track program recently broke a school record in the six-hundred meter. She broke Heather Winnie, a 2018 graduate's record of a minute forty-four point three six seconds with a score of one point four, a minute forty-two seconds. And then she actually broke her own record, her, the next meet, with a minute forty point four nine. So congratulations to Ashley on not only breaking a school record, but then breaking her own record at the next meet. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pochos.
Ashley's getting faster.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off by acknowledging the hard work of the staff to remove the snow and get the school open on time. As you know, we had some challenging snowstorms, and it was hard for them to even get here, and with ice, as you know, it was hard for all of us, especially them. So they really did a great job, I couldn't be more pleased. I'd like to also, I didn't expect that you were going to have a discussion about the maintenance helper, bus driver, the split-shift positions, but I made note earlier that I wanted to thank you for approving those positions and say that we're also looking to, you know, explore additional efficiencies and improvements in operations, and that really is a big help, so we're going to continue with that. We also going to, we're continuing to experience a reduction in temperature complaints, heat complaints from staff, and so that's going to allow us to focus on where we need to make improvements and repairs, whether it be capital or just equipment repairs, so we could try to iron out, continue to iron out the problems. And finally, we're preparing some campus tours to educate the public on the main elements of the upcoming Capitol referendum, and we'll have a project list of, you know, representative projects to discuss with folks who come to the multiple meetings or tours we have scheduled, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a quick question, if somebody wants to know when those tours are scheduled, where would they find that information?
Yeah, we, we're going to print flyers and distribute them, and I imagine they'll be on the website as well.
Cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have those ready to go, along with the community forum dates. We're just, probably Thursday or Friday of this week, we'll put them in the email blast. We didn't want to put them out too soon.
Good. Okay, is there any communication from the public? Okay, Consent Agenda Minutes, may I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent Agenda Financial, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent Agenda Personnel, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Laura, I think the administrators were waiting for an invitation.
I don't think we've ever dismissed since Dr. Benante's been here, but.
They're ready.
You are excused.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. We're almost done. Sure, go ahead, you're excused as well.
I could almost drive, so, almost. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Unfinished business, this is just to let you know that, I think we spoke about this last time, there's the availability of the petitions for the Haline Board of Education trustee seats. My seat, as well as Jen Daly's seat, is up. I just lost my spot, okay, sorry, there we are.
If I could just add, petitions are available in the district office and are due by April twenty-second, before 5:00 PM.
Great. Moving on to new business, Ms. Fumala.
Oh, excuse me. These are the CSC CPSC recommendations, and the recommended action states, "Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and preschool special education as presented."
May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry, we didn't get a second, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
We're all getting tired. BOSI's budget vote, are you?
This is just.
For your information. For our info that.
Right, the BOSI's budget vote takes place.
April twenty-third, yeah. So that's there for us, and we'll be voting April twenty-third.
The information contained in the attachments also includes information about if you wanted to nominate somebody, and you should read through it, just to make sure that you understand, because there's a, there's a deadline, I believe it's Friday, is the deadline to, either this Friday or next Friday, the deadline to nominate someone.
Great, thank you. Any communication from the last two in our audience? Three, three, but, Celia, okay.
Wait, I want to share one thing.
Oh, right, sorry.
I went to the Capitol Conference on our behalf on February eleventh. It's the second time I've gone, it's a two-day conference, so you go on Sunday, and you spend the entire day in a conference room, learning about all of the governor's proposals. Ann shared a couple of them with us that are specific to aid to money, but there's a whole slew of things he proposes that I'm sure some of you have or have not looked at, but, you know, unfunded mandates and security stuff and mental health stuff, and just a whole slew of things that NISBA, New York State School Board Association, has a problem with. So we're all there on NISBA's behalf and on school board's behalf to go to our legislators and say, you know, this, this is a problem because. and say, you know, this is a problem because of X, this is a problem because of Y, we like this idea, but if you could just tweak it a little bit, because it's going to end up costing us a lot of money if you do it this way. So, we spend Sunday learning about all the issues. There was an interesting split-screen moment, almost, where a person from the governor's office came and spoke to everybody, went through each item just about with their defense and rationale, and then Commissioner Elia came up right directly after and gave her rebuttal. He left the building, but she gave the rebuttal to all of the pieces. And then on Monday, we went and, went to the Capitol and met with our respective legislators. So, I got to meet with Sandy Gallif and with Sue Serino, and I've done this before, and I, you don't always get to meet with the senator, you meet with an aide or a staff person, but I actually got to meet with the senators and with Ms. Gallif and Ms. Serino. So, that was, you know, an opportunity, pled our case, you never know how much any of it does, but I felt like, you know, it's important to let them know we're paying attention.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, so we'll see what happens when the governor's proposal is in action or not in action, when he takes off the list, what he adds to the list. It was not damaged, after he put out his proposal, then there was the budget deficit that came out afterwards, and there was concern that the education proposal would get even worse. It didn't, the educational proposal stayed pretty much intact to what it currently, what it originally was. But there's a lot of room for improvement within that proposal, so we'll see what happens. But anyway, so, that's that.
Thank you.
And I want to add one, just a quick thing, I mean, I emailed Laura about it today, so since this will be the first time that I'm sort of coordinating for the board, the superintendent's evaluation, NISBA offers a half-day workshop on doing that, and so I'm planning on going unless anybody highly objects to the expenditure of the, so I thought that would be, I thought that would be useful.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. And then we got an invitation to do the State of the County address, IRS VP, if anybody's going, I'm going to go.
The what?
The State of the County address.
Oh.
It's next week.
I believe you, I just don't remember.
We got an invitation last week.
Oh, good, good.
Okay, all right. Thank you all for your dedication and hard work on behalf of our district. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the intentions to convene, to discuss the collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law. No action is planned to be taken during this executive session, and we will not be returning, Ms. Farmilaro.
Is there a second? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.